Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, June 6, 2017, to the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers. Please stand for the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance.
O Heavenly Father, we come today asking for your grace and mercy. We ask that you guide us in the direction that you think the great City of Portsmouth needs to go. We ask for your blessings, your ethics, and integrity. We ask you for these things in all names, in Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Five members of the Planning Commission are present. Commissioners? Oh, that's you. That's you. I'm sorry.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the May 2, 2017, public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we're in need of a motion. Commissioner Gee?
I move for acceptance of the minutes as presented.
Is there a second? Commissioner Devon?
A second to the motion.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. The minutes are approved by vote of five to zero. Due to the Fourth of July holiday, please note that our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, July the 17, 2017, at 12:30 p.m., sixth-floor conference room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their July 11, 2017, or July 25, 2017, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone, please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first case for today, UP-17-03, Port Norfolk. Jeffrey Young, managing partner of Safe Harbor Behavioral Healthcare, is requesting a use permit for a substance abuse treatment program at 2700 London Boulevard. The program will offer both residential and outpatient care. The property is presently zoned general mixed-use, GMU, and was formerly occupied by an adult day support and residential care program that catered to mentally challenged individuals. The property is designated on the comprehensive plan, future land use map, as light industrial, and is further described as Tax Map 158, Parcel 93. Staff Coordinator Stacy Porter.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The property is zoned general mixed-use, GMU. According to the zoning ordinance, a use permit is required for a drug and alcohol treatment facility. The property is located on the edge of the Port Norfolk neighborhood, at the northwest corner of Broad Street and London Boulevard. The property is 1.76 acres in size and contains a one-story, 13,475-square-foot brick building constructed in 1984. The site contains 89 parking spaces, including three handicap spaces. The site's perimeter is heavily landscaped with shrubbery and mature trees along Broad Street and London Boulevard. On the north and west is a privacy fence; on the south and east is wrought iron fencing. Incidentally, this is the former location of a residential facility for mentally challenged persons. The use permit was granted in 2008. The property also houses vans for the medical transportation business run by the facility. All operations cease in April of 2016. I'll now provide an overview of the surrounding area. The property is surrounded to the north by a warehouse, partially occupied by Virginia Scenic, a stage and set company. The property is zoned light industrial, IL. To the east is an economy lodge motel and post office. Both properties are zoned general mixed-use, GMU. To the south is the London Oaks Apartments. The property is zoned high-density urban residential, URH. And to the west are single-family residences. They are also zoned high-density urban residential, URH. The proposed substance abuse facility is Safe Harbor's first and only location. The facility will care for up to 25 residential and 40 outpatient clients and be staffed by up to 15 persons. Residential patients will be housed in an area devoted to structured supervised living, with 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week care supervised by on-site clinical staff. Outpatient care will be offered in the evenings from 6 to 9 p.m. The primary source of clientele will be referrals from the care managers in the Medicaid system, but will also include persons with private insurance and those that have been referred by their physician or other licensed medical professionals. Criteria for program administration and details of the treatment program are included in your agenda packet. Staff finds that the applicant's request for a substance abuse treatment facility complies with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, which encourages reinvestment in vacant properties, as well as is compatible with land uses found in the general mixed-use or GMU zoning district, which includes professional offices, institutions, and a broad range of light and moderately intensive commercial uses in close proximity to residential land uses. With the conditions listed in the staff report, staff recommends the approval of the applicant's request, and that concludes the presentation.
Commissioners, are there any questions or discussions for? Commissioner Devon?
Yes. How many patients can the facility, I'm talking not in that, how many patients can it handle on a 24/7 basis?
That was not a land use issue. The state of Virginia will properly license them for this treatment facility, and they will determine capacity.
Oh, okay.
So that would not be something we would determine.
Okay.
Commissioner Gee?
As stated, the prior facilities had the usage, the same usage.
Similar, similar.
Okay, so we were just looking for clarity on why it wouldn't pass with the location, or was it based on the person that was there?
No, a use permit is required specifically for drug and alcohol treatment centers, so they had to get the use permit specific to that use. The last use was to keep mentally challenged people, so a little different. It's similar, but a little different.
Thank you for the clarity.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing for item UP-17-03. I do have a few speakers. As I call your name, would you come forward, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Jeffrey Young.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Young, and I represent Safe Harbor Behavioral Healthcare. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I want to take just a brief moment to kind of talk a little bit about what it is that our intent is, and it's really a response to the ARTS program, which is the Addiction Recovery Treatment Services Program that the state of Virginia has put out. ARTS has opened up the opportunity for substance abuse care that has otherwise not existed at the needed levels. So we are very excited for the opportunity to come to Portsmouth. My partner, Jody, has been a lifelong resident of Portsmouth, and throughout the country there is obviously a severe opioid epidemic, and we are very passionate about treating substance abuse. Jody has been doing this for the early, since the early '90s. I've entered into this field over the last decade after my own recovery from opioid treatment, and our goal is to come into Portsmouth and partner with the community and try to get ahead of the opioid problem that we're struggling with here. One point of clarity that I think is particularly important as it pertains to the outpatient part of our program is this is not similar to a methadone clinic. Our folks will be entering treatments from the Medicaid system, referred on by a case manager, and who will be appropriate for the level of care of outpatient. This means that they're going to be sober. They're going to have, probably have had some, like, inpatient-level hospital detox. They shouldn't be on any long-term methadone or other maintenance medications, and what our goal will be, will be to support their recovery moving forward. So unlike a methadone clinic that can be risky to the community, these are folks that are going to be further along in their sobriety walk. I don't know if I have a whole lot more to say. I'm not a great public speaker. Is there, do I take questions, or is that just kind of it?
The Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Young? Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, I'm not a healthcare professional, so I need some help here. How would what you're doing differ from the previous use of this property, i.e., people coming and going, the number of folks staying there overnight, just general impact on the community? How would this be different from what was there a year and a half ago or so?
Well, I'm not very versed on the operations of what they were doing there. I do understand that it was a mental health facility, and so you had disabled folks who lived there residentially. I don't know what their schedule was, if they're allowed to kind of come and go as they wanted. Here, there would be a set group time, so if someone is in an outpatient program, they're going to come for a certain period of the day, a couple hours, receive group therapy, and then they're going to go back home. They're not going to be housed in the area under, like, a structured sober living. They're working, they're in the community, they're just receiving supportive services to maintain sobriety. So that's the 40-client outpatient component. In addition, we want to start off with a residential component, which is simply just someone who needs a little bit higher level of care. They've already been to the hospital, they've already gotten their detox, they're stable, but they're not quite ready to go back to work, they're not quite ready to be on their own. At that point, they're at the facility 24 hours a day. They will leave, you know, we want them to start to integrate back into the community, but we don't want them to be institutionalized, but they'll always be with staff members. So if we're taking them out to an AA meeting, they're going to go with the staff members. If we're taking them out to the park to get some fresh air, they'll be with the staff members and be supervised appropriately. Does that address the question? Okay, great.
Any additional questions for Mr. Young? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Greg Jones. You have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. This is my first time speaking before a group like this, so if I appear to be a little nervous, I am. I urge you to vote no on this issue, UP-17-03, or at the very least, delay it. The presenter in your work session noted that the, there was no response from the Civic League. I'm a member of Mount Herman Civic League, and as of our meeting, no one was aware of this particular proposal, and therefore, we were unable to get together members to respond one way or the other. Also, in the future, it'd probably be a good idea if we get, the request is, to meet with the Civic League, so we'll know what's going on in our community. There are seven residents in the immediate community, I believe, to the west of the proposed site, and of that seven, three of them indicated that they were opposed to it as well. I was unable to talk with the others because they still work, and of course, being a retiree, I have a little extra time that I can devote to it. In closing, again, I ask that you delay this request so that we can get some additional information. I know that staff is in favor of it, but again, I think it's important that those individuals that live near this particular site, that they get their, give their input as well. If it's such a great idea, I suggest staff take it closer to their home. We have a number of areas that we work with. There's the hotel directly across, there's a constant flow of individuals walking back and forth through the neighborhood, and we want to give our fair share with the City of Portsmouth helping out. But I think when we're doing an ample amount over, then we need to look at some other options for other areas in the city. I thank you very much.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Jody Pegram. I'm visually impaired, so I can't see enough except to just basically get around, so that's why I had some assistance, and I'm not making eye contact, it's because I just can't. But, you know, my name is Jody Pegram. I'm from this area. You know, I grew up in, with my grandmother part-raising me, I grew up in part Chesapeake, and my grandmother lived in Elizabeth Manor. My mother and father both own businesses in this area, and I'm a recovering person. I left in the '90s to go get help. I'd gotten in trouble running the streets of Portsmouth, and I was fortunate enough that there was intervention, and I was in a position to where I was able to go up to Pennsylvania and receive treatment. And from that, I ended up in different parts of the country, and this becoming what I've done for a living. I've gone in and set up programs in areas from Florida to California to Arizona to Washington, D.C., to help the community. You know, that's really the idea behind this. We're trying to provide a service that does not exist right now, and there's a huge problem in this community if, you know, regardless if, if we want a place for this, it's really not about that. We just need it. Like, we just need some help. There's a lot of people that are struggling with their addictions, there's a lot of people that are hurting, there's a lot of crime, there's a lot of things that are going on that are affecting this community in a negative way, and it's directly related to substance abuse issues. Obviously, not all of them, but we're just trying to provide a need. You know, we're providing a service for a need that's out there. As far as the gentleman that spoke with Mount Herman, we have Robert Andrews, and he's not signed up to speak, but he's been our community liaison. He has reached out to Port Norfolk Civic League, he's reached out to Mount Herman Civic League on a couple of different occasions with no response. As far as Port Norfolk Civic League goes, they were, and he could explain it better, but the way I understand it is they were putting together a list of questions through email, and they were going to get back to us, and we were going to respond, you know, the best way possible. I think the important part of this to understand is we're really trying to be part of the solution. I understand there's a hotel next door, that a lot of problems are coming out. We're the antithesis of that. You know, we provide supervised recovery services. You know, it is our job to keep these people safe. It is our job to keep them comfortable. We know if they're safe, they need to be there. We know if they're comfortable, they will want to be there. There's a tremendous need, and we have to do it somewhere. Like, there has to be these services available, and we have looked around, and as far as a location goes, although it may not be ideal for some, but for what we do, it's the best location we have found by far. If there are going to be services like this in the City of Portsmouth, I have not been able to find anywhere else that would be able to provide them in a way that's already built to suit, like 2700 London. So is there anything I can, any questions I could possibly answer for you guys, or?
Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Thompson?
I just would like to start out by saying thank you for trying to bring this service to the City of Portsmouth. I truly agree that we need that here, and I was going to actually ask you how y'all went about choosing a site, a location to put a facility like that, and then you touched on it right at the end. I just want to thank you guys for trying to do this.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Pegram? Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-17-03. If there's anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register, and you would like to address this application, you may come forward at this time, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. John Lifcy, I live at 229 Mount Vernon in Port Norfolk. Sorry, I didn't register, I didn't plan to speak. This does sound like a great idea. I'm a member of the Port Norfolk Civic League, but I don't speak for the Civic League, by the way. Our biggest concern is the location, and there's probably not a better location in Portsmouth either. I mean, to me, it should be in a resident, in an industrial area. Unfortunately, we don't have those. This is on the edge of our neighborhood and Mount Herman. The biggest concern is, right across the street is London Oaks. We all know its reputation. Right across the street is a hotel that rents by the hour, so we know its reputation. I think our biggest concern is security. The city's worked very hard to clean up Broad Street, especially Broad. We've had a big problem over the years with drugs, with prostitution. It's gotten better. We don't want to see it backsliding. So again, our biggest concern is the outpatient part. Six to nine at night, where do they go after they get off? So that's our biggest concern, and I'm not sure that this is happening so fast that people have had a chance to talk about that, but from our viewpoint, the biggest concern is the security. Thank you.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Thank you. Mr. Lifcy, it's good to see you again.
Thanks, Peter.
He and I used to serve on the Commission together. I know that you've been very active in your Civic League, and I appreciate your concern. When it was the previous use for this property, did you have any problems then?
It's, this is apples and oranges. That is, what they were doing then with Lucas, the Lucas people, was totally different from a drug rehab. I mean, they were dealing with inpatient-only, and with drug, with apparently with people with mental problems. So to me, it's totally apples and oranges.
Okay, I sort of heard a different story, but maybe I missed something here. It sounded to me like this was going to be folks who had already gone through the worst part of recovery and just needed a helping hand now, and they wouldn't be coming and going in and out of the facility at night.
All I know is what I've read in the proposal, and it does, it is outpatient also, and they go there from six to nine at night. And then they leave at nine o'clock.
Okay. I appreciate the thought there then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there anyone else who did not get an opportunity to register that would like to address this You have up to five minutes to speak.
My name is Kelly Chappell. I live at 601 Dorset Avenue here in Portsmouth. I only came here today for another thing to speak about. I didn't know anything else was going on. I absolutely would love to see this brought to fruition. I don't know really much about it, but as soon as I heard someone trying to reach out to people with opioid addiction, I support it 1,000 percent. I lost my 16-year-old daughter to a heroin overdose not too long ago, and anyone that's willing to step up and work with these people that desperately need help, they have my support 100 percent, and I just think it's so very important. I know location and there are neighborhoods, but this problem is so much bigger than all of that, and this community really needs to try to understand the scope of the devastation that's brought by opioid addiction and the loss that can come from it. So anytime someone is willing to step up and help with that, I just think we all need to support that. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there anyone else here who would like to address UP-17-03? Appearing to be none. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission?
Commissioner Youngblood?
I've given some thought to this, and I need to point out that I live in Old Town, and three blocks away from my house, there was a methadone clinic for, golly, I've been here 17 years, they just moved, so let's say 16 years, and I didn't even know it was there for the longest time until one of the pharmacists that worked there pointed it out to me. It was a totally benign use of the property. When the city moved to the new public, was it the Public Health Building on High Street, they built another facility to handle this methadone clinic, and I remember there was an awful lot of fear from the neighbors about what this was going to do to them and to their way of life, and I think the record will show that there has been no degradation of the quality of life for those folks due to this methadone clinic. It was totally benign in our neighborhood, I think it's totally benign in their neighborhood also, and I would hope that we would see a similar situation, a similar result with this proposed use, and we certainly have a need for it, not only nationwide, but also in our city. So I'm going to support it based on my own experience. I understand the thoughts of the neighbors, and I'm not discounting that a bit. John, if things go pear-shaped on this, I hope we'll maintain the ability to shut it down, but I honestly don't believe that's going to be the case, and I guess if nothing else, I wanted you to understand the way I'm going to vote. Thank you.
Appearing to be no more speakers. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, the, Commissioners in need of a motion for UP-17-03, as well as a Commissioner Thompson?
I would like to make a motion that we accept item UP-17-03.
Commissioner Gee?
A second. With conditions.
I have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved five to zero with conditions. Our next item, UP-17-05, Cavalier Manor. C.E. Forehand, agent for T-Mobile Communications, is requesting a use permit to construct a 165-foot monopole telecommunications tower on the rear portion of 3637 Victory Boulevard. The tower would be located approximately 60 feet from Rapidan Street. The property is owned by NTW Properties LLC, and it's designated on the comprehensive plan, future land use map, as commercial. This property is also referenced as Tax Map Number 531, Parcel 1.2. Staff Coordinator, John Hartley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this is something that we haven't talked about in a while. The last cell towers that were proposed in the city that required use permits was back in 2012, when Intelos proposed two new towers, both of them actually off of Portsmouth Boulevard. in 2012 when Intelos proposed two new towers, both of them actually off of Portsmouth Boulevard, one just west of Effingham and the other just before Elmhurst Lane. Before I go into the actual issues of this particular application, I just want to go over again with you the requirements of the Telecommunications Act of 1996. We were fortunate, those of us in the planning and zoning world, to have Congress preserve the local zoning authority on applications for telecommunication towers, subject to certain limitations. And those limitations, there are basically six of them. One is that any decision denying a telecommunications tower must be in writing, that any decisions denying a telecommunications tower must be supported by substantial evidence, that the localities may not adopt regulations that prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting wireless service, that localities may not adopt regulations that unreasonably discriminate against functionally equivalent providers, that localities must act on applications within a reasonable period of time, and that any actions are preempted and we are prohibited as a locality from regulating on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. Essentially, that last one means that we can't consider either the environmental or human effects on radio frequencies and their emissions, since that is really the realm of the Federal Communication Commission. So, with that, I'd like to proceed. What is proposed is a 165-foot monopole, which is a self-standing structure. It is proposed on a lot that is essentially a through lot or a double frontage lot that runs between Victory Boulevard and Rapidan. On the screen is the current zoning of the surrounding area, and you'll see a large pink strip that goes through. And most of those lots, including the property in question today, are through lots in that they have frontage both on Rapidan and on Victory Boulevard. To the south or the west, the area is zoned urban residential, and that is part of the Cavalier Manor neighborhood. To the east is what's generally referred to as Victory Village property, and that is zoned mixed-use employment. So, there's this strip of commercial on the opposite side or on the south side, west side of Victory Boulevard. This is an aerial photo, an aerial view of the area. The property, again, that the application is for, is highlighted in yellow with a red star indicating the location of the tower as it's proposed. In this picture, you can see Interstate I-64, 264, along the right side. Just beyond that is the Victory Crossing commercial area. Again, on the upper side of the slide, you can see the residential community of Cavalier Manor. So, what is proposed is essentially directly adjacent to the Cavalier Manor residential community. This is a ground photo of the property, and it's Dale's Automotive Repair. Most of this site is occupied in the front. The tower would be in the rear. The lattice work tower that you see in this photo is on the adjacent property, which is Culligan Water Softening Business. According to my early discussions with the applicant, they looked at this tower and determined that it was so antiquated a structure, it probably would not be able to support a cell telecommunications equipment and wiring, et cetera. This is just a photo of Rapidan, just to give you an idea of the street itself. On your right are single-family, one-story residences. On your left is the office building that was built by United House of Prayer, and it's a two-story office building, fairly good screening for protecting the neighbors. This building, I think, was built in 2006, if I'm not mistaken. It was prior to the 2010 zoning ordinance. Two other photos. The top photo is the back of this property, and it's a little hard to see from my distance, but there is a storage yard in the back that's been enclosed with a wooden privacy fence. Essentially, the tower would be in front of that fence towards us. The picture on the bottom are those residences that are most directly impacted by the proposed telecommunications tower, again, they're one-story, single-family ranch-style homes that are part of the Cavalier Manor community. This is the plan view of what's proposed, and I mentioned that wooden fence, again, it's a little hard to see, but that's outlined in the green line. The tower itself, again, proposed to be 165 feet tall, is sighted by the red triangle. And on the very right is an elevation, and just to give you some sense of scale, down on the bottom, and I'm going to see if my pointer works, down on the bottom, here is what is purported to be a six-foot chain-link fence, just to give you some sense of the scale. The elevation also shows that T-Mobile's proposing to be on the very top, but would also provide three additional locations for future co-location of other telecommunications companies. In evaluating this proposal, there were a number of items in the Comprehensive Plan that were key to our recommendation, our final, the staff recommendation on this application. One of the key objectives of the plan is to minimize conflicts between incompatible land uses. And looking at the size and the scale of the proposed tower, it's the staff's opinion that that land use is incompatible with single-family detached residential development. This is supported by Land Use Policy Number One, which maintains viable land uses and includes a policy to prevent impacts and encroachments of incompatible land uses and ensure proper transitions. And when the plan references transitions, we're really talking about land uses that sit between two incompatible uses. So, you would have, you might have commercial and then multifamily and then single family. You might have heavy commercial, office, single family. So, you create kind of a buffer between the more intensive use and the single-family residences. Or buffering. In the sense of buffering, you're usually talking about a buffer yard of thick vegetation between the different uses. Policy Three, reduce land use conflicts, which includes policies to introduce transitional uses between lower intensity and higher intensity uses. Given all of those statements that are in the Comprehensive Plan, and those really are reiterated in the Housing and Neighborhood Character Chapter of the plan as well, staff has determined that it is an incompatible land use. And I think the photos that I've presented and the comments in the staff report support We did look at some alternative locations, and I will say that this is by no means a comprehensive assessment. It's really more for purposes of example. The red star indicates the site that's proposed before you today. The yellow stars are alternative sites that are open. Whether they're available or not for this use is something that the telecommunications industry and T-Mobile would have to determine. I would add that one of those sites that's identified is a water tower that is owned by the city, that's essentially right at the intersection of pretty much Airline or the Railroad and Victory Boulevard. So, in the opinion of staff, there are a number of other alternatives in the near vicinity north of the interstate, which do not present the kinds of conflicts and incompatibilities the tower that's proposed would create with the Cavalier Manor neighborhood. Unlike some other cases that you might see from us, we are recommending denial, and we have listed the reasons. They're on the screen here. The location is incompatible with existing detached single-family development. There is no transition or buffering between the proposed tower and those residences. The proposed use is inconsistent with the policies and strategies contained within the Comprehensive Plan, that there are more suitable sites, particularly north of Interstate 264, keeping in mind the map that I just had up. Also, if you look at the coverage mapping that was presented to us by the applicant, those coverage maps showed both the existing network that T-Mobile is operating and the proposed network with the new tower, based on staff's reading of those coverage maps. They still, there still exists T-Mobile service in the area proposed to be covered by this tower. The purpose of this tower, as stated by the applicant, is to expand and enhance the existing service. This is not a dead zone based on their coverage mapping. Now, whether you can stream the latest movie or video, that may be a different question, but there is T-Mobile communication in this area, again, based on their coverage mapping. So, we are recommending denial at the staff level. I would also mention that one of our practices is not to assume that you're going to necessarily agree with staff, and in that event, we've proposed a number of conditions that were you of a mind to recommend approval. You could attach those conditions, and in the staff's mind, those conditions would address at least some of the more significant impacts that we believe should, you know, need to be addressed should this project be approved. With that, I'll stop talking and attempt to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Hartley? Commissioner Youngblood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I understand from our work session, the lattice tower that is on the adjoining property, that is to say, the Culligan site, would not be compatible if it were brought up today, and it's only there because it's a pre-existing structure. Is that correct, sir? That's correct. Thank you. If I can just take one step beyond that, one of the things that we hear regularly is that what is there should set the tone, the character, the design standards of what is built today. And repeatedly, we're challenged with the fact that the city has declared to raise the standards for new development. So, you can't always be swayed or, today's standards shouldn't necessarily be the ones that existed 10 and 20 years ago. We are trying to raise those standards. So, in this case, while there's a tower there today, it is historic. The city has altered its policies and its plans to change that, so.
Commissioner Gee.
As a frame of reference in mentioning that other, the existing tower, how tall is that tower?
We, I actually checked with the assessor's office, and they don't have the height of that tower listed on their property card. Based on measuring with aerial photos, it appears to be somewhere between 80 and 100 feet. Approximately, yeah. And that's the best estimate we can get.
Commissioners, any additional questions for Mr. Hartley? Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-17-05. I do have several speakers. As I call your name, would you come forward? And you have up to five minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Joe Wright.
Members of the Planning Commission, good evening. I'm glad that the, a member of the planning staff proposed denying this because, as I put on the sheet today, we wasn't ready for it yet. And the reason why I said "yet" is because they didn't have the decency to come to our Civic League and explain to us what they were trying to do. We're not a community of no. We, most of the time, when someone proposes any kind of site or building or store or anything else in our neighborhood, they try to contact our Civic League. The reason why I'm here, I'm the treasurer of our Civic League. The president had to work today, so he's not here, and he sent me, he dispatched me to come and explain to you all that we wasn't ready for this tower yet. We already have one tower out there on Greenwood Drive. And most of the time, when things like this happen, like I said before, they have the decency to come to our Civic League. We're not the community of no, but we have a strong feeling for our community. I've been out there 58 years, and I've seen a number of things that slipped by us because we weren't informed that it was going to happen. For instance, we had a car lot in our neighborhood that sold everything except cars. We had a flea market out there one time that sold everything except fleas. So, I'm glad the staff denied, voted to deny, urging you to deny this, and I thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Wright, Commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is C.E. Forehand.
Afternoon, C.E. Forehand, 219 Saralvo Road, Norfolk, representing T-Mobile. Here to speak in behalf of this communications application. I do have a letter from our chief RF engineer. If it's okay to pass that forward, I submitted it to staff, but it explains capacity coverage.
Do you want to bring it? It's in one letter?
Gives you a little bit of an explanation about capacity coverage from our chief RF engineer for Virginia. I have been for several years, for multiple years, been building capacity sites for T-Mobile in Portsmouth. I located some antennas on the hospital. I located antennas on several buildings and apartment buildings. I'm working with the city right now to attach some antennas on an existing water tank. Capacity coverage is for high-density areas, for areas where our customers are demanding better coverage. So, what's happening here is that T-Mobile would not build a site in this location if their customers were not calling and complaining and demanding better coverage in the area. That's T-Mobile and also T-Mobile's, which has also acquired MetroPCS. So, T-Mobile and MetroPCS are one and the same, and we have a lot of customers that are citizens of Portsmouth in this area, and they might not be here. And they might not be here today because a lot of times, the silent majority doesn't show up to these types of meetings. They do call us and they do complain about us. This is one of my high-impact, high-visibility sites for the state of Virginia. So, I've got a lot of pressure to try to put something out there. And one of the reasons why is because people are using data in their homes. And if they can't download something, or they can't watch a movie in their homes, then they're calling and they're complaining. And you've got a community college right there. And guess what all those students are doing, you know, while they're in their classes? Every single one of them are on their cellphones and they're using data. So, we need to put a lot of antennas out here. We need to put at least 12 and accompanying equipment, 60 to 132-pound antennas somewhere in this vicinity. And the farther we get away from this impact area, this is our optimal site and it's at our optimal height. It's not saying we couldn't go a little bit lower, but the farther we get away from that community college and these, these citizens that are living in these houses, the more interference we're creating at another site. So, we've got sites surrounding this whole area, but this is high-impact. We're losing, you know, we're losing, we're losing signals. People can't, they can't communicate, but they can't, they can't download their data in this location. So, that being said, I've been working on this specific site for, for over a year. And the, the, the theory, I guess, was that, you know, we, we don't think we can accomplish what we need to do with the existing tower out there. So, there's already a tower. This is a commercial zone. It's a light industrial use. It should be compatible with something like this. There's already a tower out there. So, you know, we can build one next door, and this tower is available to any other carrier. Because I can guarantee you, wherever T-Mobile's going to go, if they, if they're having trouble in an area, the other carriers are going to be having trouble, trouble too. So, the ordinance, your ordinance requires that towers be available for other carriers to co-locate on.
You have 30 seconds, sir.
This is, you know, so this tower will be available for not only just T-Mobile, but any other carrier that wants to put antennas out there. And the other, the other carriers, they're, they're going to want to put a lot of antennas, just like T-Mobile is, because that coverage is being drained. And there are, I guarantee you, there are customers, citizens of Portsmouth, right now, calling us, demanding better coverage in this area. And they may not be here right now, but they're there. So, I'm available, and I'll be available for any questions from the commute, from the commissioners, the community, citizens, anybody that's here today.
Commissioner Devon.
You say that this particular site is your ultimate site?
Yes, sir.
For the kinds of transmission, data transmission?
Yes, sir.
What, it, it is the ultimate, but have you seen the alternative sites being recommended?
The, the further we get away from this impact area, this, you know, community college, the, and like I say, you can look at our coverage maps, and you can see that we have sites surrounding this location, right? So, if we go over to the water tank, we're going to create some interference over there. And then we're not going to be covering this area over here closer to the community college and all these residents behind us, because these are all our customers. So, we're going to create interference in one location and then, you know, not be ultimate, not be the, the ultimate location for the coverage in this specific loc, you know, locality.
Is there anything you can do to the site to make it more attractive?
Like I say, it's not, it's not, I mean, we could obviously, we could actually lower the site a little bit, but again, your ordinance does require co-locations. So, you know, we think that there's going to be other, other carriers interested in location, locating antennas here in this vicinity.
So, when you say co-locations, you're talking about the other major carrier?
AT&amp;T, Verizon.
Verizon.
Yes, sir.
So, they're having the same problem?
Whenever we're, whenever we're having a problem, you know, we can see, you can see that there, there are not, there's not a place for those carriers to locate anything in that vicinity either. And it's high, it's, it's high demand. So, whenever we're having a problem, it's, it's, once, once somebody's having a problem in an area, you can, you can almost guess that, you know, another carrier. I don't work for those carriers right now. I actually have worked for all the carriers in the past, but, you know, right now, for the last several years, I've been working just for T-Mobile. So, I can't speak for them. But I know when, whenever, whenever we build a new site, a lot of times, the other ones will be right on our heels.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Forehand?
Yes. Is this a private or public location?
Well, it's a, it's a private property. Yes, sir. I mean, I, I can't say it's not a, I mean, it's, it's available to anybody. The tower would be available to.
I'm speaking more about the ownership of the property.
It's a business or?
It's owned by a business.
Private business, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for joining us today. One of the main questions, I mean, I'm actually a 14-year veteran of the telecommunications industry. So, dealt with a lot of PR on your end of these things. One of the questions, and I definitely can respect the fact that TCC is a hotspot. Has, has that location been looked at? I'm not sure if there's rules that go into place with, with state buildings like that and habitating there. Because, I mean, ultimately, they're the ones who would benefit the most along with, I mean, the community is honestly secondary when compared to the usage that's going to come from the school in that area.
Well, I'll just state that T-Mobile is, you know, they are, they are very competitive in their pricing. And in order to, in order to be competitive, you know, we, we, we are trying to find the path of least resistance in, in, in order to develop sites. I have worked with the state. I've worked with the VDOT. I've worked on all these towers you see on the interstate. I've been in this industry for, you know, over 20 years. And I've worked on all these VDOT sites. The state is not the easiest or the cheapest entity to deal with. So, not saying that we haven't looked at, we did look at that. But really, we, we want to try to get the coverage out there as, as quickly to our customers and so that we can pass on the savings and as cost-efficient as possible, so we can pass on those savings to our customers. Because we are, we are conscious of, of cost, and we want to, we want to provide our customers with an economical deal that is, that is, is, you know, I mean, our pricing is better than the, the big guys. It really is. And so, you know, we want to offer economy. And therefore, we, we look for, we look for that economy in our expenses also.
And you asked, or you brought up a magic point that led me to my next question quickly. What is your, what's your anticipated timeline for start as well as timeline for start to completion if, if this was approved, no matter what the site is?
The ultimate goal is we really need, I mean, as soon as possible. Because, you know, this, this one is actually, this is, you know, I've been working on this for a while. Ultimately, we really need this site up in the air before the end of the year. Sooner, if possible. So, the sooner the better.
I guess that's where my worry comes in at, is that with the, with the community being unable to speak with you all on this, I, especially since you're saying you've been working on it for a while, I thought that the opportunity would have happened by now.
Well, I'd be glad to meet with, you know, and that, that, I have probably 80 sites I'm working on, but now that I know, I'd be glad to go in and meet with the community before city council. That, that's absolutely, you know, a priority. I really didn't have a staff report until just recently, so I really didn't even know that there was, even a recommendation of denial. I have, I have, you know, a lot of sites I'm working on, but I'd be glad, very, very glad to take the time to meet with the Civic League. And apologize for not doing so in advance.
Commissioners, are there any other questions for Mr. Forehand? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next speaker is Andrew Whalen. Please state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
I'm Andrew Whalen. I represent the owners of 3645 Victory Boulevard. We're the adjacent property, Culligan Water, or BNS Water Treatment is our corporate name. And that's, that's basically what I came here to tell you is, we're next door. We're not opposed to the tower. And we're, you know, open to negotiation for our tower because, you know, I don't think it's been evaluated whether it's structurally sound or not. I think those are just opinions from probably 100 yards away.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Whalen? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-17-05. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward at this time, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Honorable Commissioners, and fellow interested parties. I am Mark Gaduldig Yatrowski, P.O. Box 50141, Portsmouth, Virginia. We have an interesting conflict of, or competition that's in process here. On one hand, the rights of the homeowners who would be affected by this sort of visual change to the landscape. On the other hand, we have people who are users of telecommunications services. And what your charge is, is to take into account the land use aspects of this particular issue. Now, as a T-Mobile subscriber myself, I have to say I'm appreciative of the company's commitment to keeping costs low. I am a well-known cheapskate, and I like to pay no more for, for service than I have to. On the other hand, I'm also a homeowner, and I know that if a tower were to be proposed for neighboring property, I would view that with some skepticism in terms of the aesthetics of the installation. There is another concern, there's another issue that's a little more distant here, but it is definitely coming. I have attended a number of discussions about 5G wireless, including one that was a city council briefing. And there is some enabling legislation that the General Assembly has adopted, which allows the providers a great deal of latitude in terms of where they will site their infrastructure. The, the really sticky part of this is the towers will be much closer together and much more prevalent than in the existing 4G environment. So, what does that mean? Well, potentially, you could be permitting a tower in a location that is not optimal, that is in conflict with our existing zoning code. And coming along behind it will be new technology which will make the 4G technology obsolete, or it will make the 4G technology less desirable. So, you have an undesirable use in a residential area, abutting a residential area that's part of the skyline, and it's going to be supplanted in the not-too-distant future. I would urge you to accept the recommendation of planning staff, deny the application, and let planning work with the applicant on alternate siting that is compatible with the zoning ordinance. Thank you very much.
Any additional questions for Mrs. Trukowski? Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If there is anyone else here who would like to address this application, you may come forward at this time, state your name and address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Hello again, I'm Kelly Chapel. I live at 601 Dorset Avenue. I do have a favor. I don't really know how to use this. Can you put the map back up that shows the neighborhood, please? Thank you. I appreciate it. You could do that one. Yeah, that's fine. Yes, sir. Does it work? Okay. No? Okay. So, I'm just going to point real quick. I live here. The sign that is proposed for the tower is set here. So, we thought that they were going to build a tower here. Now I see it's here. And I'm still opposed. It's not an attractive tract of land there that we face already. And unfortunately, I have had to make some complaints to the city in regards to that. I just don't think that this is the ideal place to put this tower for not only the residents, but for construction purposes, property values. My husband is a firefighter, and he has very strange hours, and he sleeps at very strange hours. And I don't know how long it takes to build a tower, but I know that that would interrupt his lifestyle, and I'm definitely opposed to that. But beautification and property values, and if that is the right place for a giant tower, I just don't think it's the best use of that land. And I know he said he could lower the tower, but I believe that just brings those radio waves closer to us if you lower the tower. I just don't think it's the best use of that land. Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioners? Thank you, ma'am. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there anyone else who would like to address this application?
Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner Thompson.
I just have to ask again, if you moved, how far across the interstate is it? Is it a mile? If you went to one of those alternate locations, is it that far?
He wants to come back up to the table.
Right. John, do you know?
This is the first time I've seen this.
Okay. I know that some of us were talking about how, how big of a difference in coverage that would make if it were sited across 264.
Would it make that much difference?
Again, we're, we're trying to, farther away, the, the more interference it's going to cause with other sites. So, basically, you know, we're citing this, there's, there's already a tower there, so we're trying to fit in with, that, that's the example of the built environment. So, you know, there aren't any other towers in those other locations. The water tank's too far away, for sure. I've already looked at that. It's too close to one of our existing sites. It's going to cause interference. I am dealing with the city on a different water tank, on another water tank. I am putting, I am currently, right now, I'll be before a city council, I think, in July or August with a, you know, on a lease with the city on another water tank. So, I am, I am trying to use whatever is existing out there. So, ideally, we're going to be as close to this, I mean, that neighborhood is our target and the community college on the other side. So, the farther, realistically, y'all are going to have to deal with covering neighborhoods because we need to cover neighborhoods. We don't necessarily need to cover industrial areas all the time. We need to...
don't necessarily need to cover industrial areas all the time. We need to, the community to figure out a, a plan to cover neighborhoods because that's where the, that's where the demand is, in capacity especially.
Sir, I appreciate you, I appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Devon?
I have one more, one more question of T-Mobile. We're talking capacity here, and where you want to locate it is where the style is. But directly across that, to the side of 264 is another location. Would that capacity be so much different from where you're proposing?
I have no idea if I can obtain a lease on that piece of property or not. Like I, like I said, the staff, you know, we just, today was the first time I saw staff suggestions of alternative locations. I haven't seen those before. You know, we, we, I have no idea if I can obtain a lease in that location.
I guess my next question then would be to Jonathan. Are those properties available? They're alternative sites, but are they available?
I know that, I know that a couple of them are. I don't know that all of them are. I identified areas that were, or parcels that were essentially vacant. I know that we have a number of facilities on existing water towers. I also know that the two directly along the interstate, I'll say just for below Victory Boulevard, as you're looking at this photo, that are back behind Victory Crossing, are areas that are both available. The three on the north, one I think is on the Regional Jail property. The other two directly along the interstate are areas that are vacant. So, again, this is not a comprehensive, we didn't look for, we didn't go out and talk to owners and try to find another site for this facility. We just identified areas where if T-Mobile went out and talked with the owners, it would be a more suitable location from land, from a land use perspective than where the current tower is proposed.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appearing to be no more speakers. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, the chair is in need of a motion and a second. Commissioner Youngblood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we deny UP-17-05.
Commissioners, is there a second? Commissioner Devon? We have a motion and a second that UP-17-05 be denied. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for point of clarity, the motion is to deny, a yes vote is to deny it, and a no vote is approving it. So, vote yes to deny, no approve. This vote is denied by vote of 5 to 0.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for the day. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, do you have any further business? Mr. Baldwin, is there any further business?
Yes, I have one minor thing. I'd like to just make a correction. In the beginning of the meeting, it was noted your next work session's on the 17th, and as we discussed in the work session, it's actually on July the 18th. It's Tuesday, July the 18th. Just want to correct that for the record.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any additional comments? There being none, this meeting is now adjourned.